Hey, this is Brett the Hitman Heart and you're listening to the Smack Raw Podcast.
Hey, what's going on you guys? Welcome to the AEW recap brought to you by the Smack Raw Podcast. I am your host Katie, Katie, Bay Bay.
Bay Bay?
Baby.
Close enough, I'll take it.
Yeah.
And I'm joined as always by RN and Kevin. How are you guys doing?
What's good, girl?
I'm doing great. How are you?
I, I'm okay. I'm gonna put on a good face for the podcast, but I'm alright.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
We'll take it.
I'm still gonna give you shit.
I know you are.
Just kidding.
No, you're, you're not though. But that's okay. It's fine.
I don't know.
A kid cuz I love.
I'll accept that, it's fine. Um.
Yeah.
So before we dive into Dynamite, I just want to say what's up and hello to everyone in the chat because we are live on twitch.tv/puttingyouover. You can catch us Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, live, the occasional Sunday for pay-per-views. And if you miss a livestream, we have the video form of the podcast up on our YouTube channel, youtube.com/smackrawpodcast. And we have the audio form up on a plethora of podcast platforms. And in case you guys did not know already, we are the exclusive recap for wrestling news world. Make it your home for all of your wrestling news wants and needs. Check out their articles, their podcasts, their premium content. And you know, help support, help support us, help support the show by doing what Kevin?
Stickers, shirts. Go to our Patreon and looking at our stuff and giving us money for that stuff so we can buy awesome stuff like these LED lights I have. This sweet ass microphone, this ring light. It's all thanks to you Patreon. But listen, we give back. We will give back to you as patrons, as the, as the Smack Raw family. We got stickers for you. We got t-shirts for you. We got goddamn unpopular wrestling opinions for you. We got advertising for you. There's tears. It'll make you tear up every time you go there, how beautiful it is. Patreon.com/SmackRawPodcast. We love you.
Wow. He took your line.
Stole my line, but that's at least you got it right.
At least he finally got it. Oh my.
There you go.
Wow, Kevin, I can't believe you actually knew what a Patreon was. I'm so proud of you.
The edibles hit hard today, but I hit back.
Like Kevin said, uh, in a nice long rant. Stickers, uh, you can submit, uh, video questions for the podcast or hot takes for unpopular wrestling opinions, which made its return finally. Uh, you'll have to check it out once it goes up on YouTube. Again, youtube.com/SmackRawPodcast. Kyle is the host obviously, and he had Warren Hayes, Colin West, and Tom Sfenton. And it was one of the best episodes of UWO. Kev saw part of it, he knows.
Funny as hell. Yeah.
It was amazing.
It was really good. It was really good. I would, yeah, it really, really was. I'm not just saying that cuz I hate Kyle, you know, so it was, you know, actually good. Just kidding. I love you Kyle. And you did a really good job dude, actually.
He did. Alright, so you guys both missed quite a, quite a bit of, uh, Dynamite.
Oh yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I, I have cable for two goddamn reasons, two goddamn reasons. And that's football and wrestling and like I missed a good, I, I mean, I'm not even kidding, probably 15 minutes at least of the show, maybe more actually. Because of all this shit.
Like honestly, I was legit, it's about a half an hour.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't be surprised if that's what it was for me too cuz I was having the same issues that you were.
It was like watching the Hulu version of fucking NXT.
Yeah, yeah, for real. And like I missed, like Jesus, and the parts that I missed a lot of really sucked. I missed that much of it too. It was like the town hall shit. The fucking, uh, main event, missed like half of that match. Uh, the, the Bucks FTR segment, missed most of that. Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's why I'm here because I watched the whole show and had no problems with my cable provider. So that's why I'm here.
Well, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you. This is, this is the only reason I'm here. Just, just to do Dynamite and that's it.
Yeah. If you, if, if your cable sucked as bad as ours, you'd be fired by now, so.
I mean, my, my laptop and internet was also trash for two months, so I didn't get fired. I basically got promoted.
It's not anymore.
Facts.
Yeah.
Well, here we go again. Alright, so what started off Dynamite was, uh, a little interview with MJF, Kevin's every person, and Wardlow. MJF basically does all the talking, basically saying when Wardlow, uh, wins, um, MJF is going to become, uh, champ because MJF basically owns Wardlow. And that's, that's not how that works.
And Wardlow did not look like he agreed with that at all either.
He was like, sure Max.
Oh, he's, he, he said, okay. He said, okay.
I mean, but like he didn't, he was just like accusing Max, not Matt, Jesus. And then Sammy Guevara comes over and is just like, listen, Max, like cut the shit. We don't want you in the inner circle. He's going to make sure, uh, no they, uh, no they do not. Well, half of them do not want Max in the inner circle. And Sammy's just like.
They're stupid.
Okay, well, let's relax here. They're not stupid. They're entitled to their own opinions. Which their opinions are correct because Max is trash. But basically Sammy's just like, you're never gonna join the inner circle. Um, MJF, he said, I wish I were down the line, he said. About Sammy looking like a kid who sells Adderall or something.
Then he looks like he's, uh, from the guy that looks like he sells Adderall to middle schoolers.
That's, yeah, it was hilarious. That was really good.
I wish I wrote it down. It was, I mean, that was definitely the best line probably than like, that was, I wish I wrote it down. But that's why you guys are here to help me.
The, well, just like that. That whole promo was so good cuz it like, it played to like both of their, uh, their strengths, you know? It was basically just MJF just being a schoolyard bully and like Sammy Guevara being like, nah, dude.
Nah, dude.
You know, I mean, like that's basically what it was, but it worked.
Sammy Guevara doesn't get any credit for how good he is. I know a lot of it was what he said and everything that kinda held him back a little bit, but I feel like, uh, he did his time. He showed remorse.
Oh yeah.
But yeah, he doesn't, I mean, you could definitely tell that being with Chris Jericho and everything is, he's soaking that shit the fuck in cuz he gets, he just gets better and better. Every time he comes out to me, uh, he's definitely on my, on my level. To me, he's on, he's on the level with MJF and Jericho and I'm like, he's not, he may not be better than him, but he's not that far behind him.
I could agree with that.
He can hang with him at least, which is, which is good enough, you know? Also, also I like that, uh,
He froze up?
I think he froze up. Okay, if, if he ends up getting dropped, I'm not gonna know how to change everything on the fly, so this is gonna be great. Hello?
Please be back.
Okay, be back, Jesus. Maybe.
If he's not back.
Kevin?
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just gonna keep going. I guess, we'll go, we'll just go with it. So this basically, uh, okay, you're back now, alright. You were frozen. We got nervous.
I'm back. I'm sorry, sorry.
It's okay.
No, I get that, I get that.
I can't hear him talk.
Oh my God. So anyways, this basically just leads into the.
Hang on, I'm gonna go beat my kid.
Okay. Okay, you do, you deal with that. Me and RN will continue. Jesus. So basically this leads into, uh, the Wardlow, Hangman, and Page match, the semifinals of the friggin tournament, which whatever the hell the name is, I'm not going into it again.
The championship tournament.
Championship tournament, thank you.
Number one contender tournament, that's what it is.
Yes, base, yes, there we go. So you, did you see the whole match?
Yeah.
Okay. So honestly, with both of them being such like bigger, stronger guys, they're so agile, it's kind of crazy.
It's not so much they're both big, it's that you get to see how big Wardlow really isn't because he's fucking the same size as Hangman.
I mean, he's, he's a little bulk, he's a little bulkier, but like the same.
Yeah, but I meant like they, these are the two of your biggest guys on the fucking roster and they make Wardlow out, out to be like, he's like seven foot tall or some shit and he's really like six one, if that.
If that. I don't know, I'm so bad at like determining like the heights. I think they all look the same and then you see like Brody Lee and then, I don't know.
And he's only like six six, but he looks like he's seven one, seven two compared to everybody on the fucking roster, so.
Very true.
Yep.
There he is, already he's back.
Yeah, uh, my kid was double streaming again, so I punched him in the. Okay, I didn't punch him in the nose, but I took his phone or tablet away from him, so he's not gonna be doing that anymore.
No double streaming shithead.
No double streaming. Not on Wednesday nights.
Yeah.
So.
Well, yeah, cuz the little jerk, this is what he does. He has a fort that he has in his room and he can't see his TV. So he'll, he puts the TV on so we'll have light and then he lays in his fort, which is just a mattress laid up against the wall on his bed. And he watches TV in there on his tablet. And I'm like, bro, you, one or the other. Anyway.
Anyways, I mean, it's a good match, shows how strong.
He was not happy with me.
Shows how strong both of them are. Uh, Wardlow appears, Paige through the barricade.
I'm speaking that fucking spot between WWE and them, like I'm just sick of that. And theirs, it looks even worse because it's just a little fucking guardrails, like a, a fence, it's not even, at least in WWE, they have a setup where it's like a actual like barricade for him to go through, but all he did was push him through a fence, like an opening fence door place. Like that's, I mean, so sick of that fucking spot. And that's not just me talking shit about AEW, I'm sick of, you doing it, I'm sick of NXT. Do not do that spot anymore, it's over, let it go.
I can agree.
Nah, I hear you. It's, it's, it's getting old. I mean, once in a great, it's just overused.
Yeah. But that's what I'm saying, and there just like you weren't really putting him through anything. You literally just knocked over a guardrail. At least in WWE shit like explodes and like falls apart, like they really blew some shit up. Like with that one, it was just like, he literally just threw him into a guardrail, like.
Yep.
Exactly.
Unnecessary.
Yeah, he could, he could have speared him any other place and it would have been just as impactful as going through the guardrail, basically.
Somebody spear up against the side of the fucking ramp, that big ass hole block ramp right there, coming in, spear somebody up and go through that, then, then alright, I'll give you the okay on that one. Just throwing somebody through an open fence door like you're outside playing football in the front yard, that's whatever.
Nah, I hear you though. I hear you.
I mean, it also just wasn't like a good spear at all. Like he just, he picked them up and then kinda just, eh, but regardless, that spot was terrible and overused. The rest of the match was good. Uh, Wardlow actually ends up hitting the F10, but Paige's, they kept calling him the veteran. Cuz he's been wrestling for like.
I didn't understand that.
I mean, I think it's just because he's been wrestling longer. That's literally the only thing I can think of.
I guess, cuz I was gonna, like Paige is actually pretty young for a wrestler, isn't he? Like younger than I am, I think.
I thought he was like twenty-five or something, twenty-four, twenty-five.
I think he's close to my age, yeah, and I'm twenty-four.
Yeah, I, I don't think he's that much, yeah. I didn't think he was close to thirty at all.
Yeah, I thought he was, so yeah, I don't know. I don't, I have no idea how old Wardlow is to be honest with you, so. I don't know, maybe, maybe Wardlow's like nineteen or some shit, who fucking knows?
Savannah.
Twenty-nine, okay.
Yeah, Savannah in the chat says he's twenty-nine. Thank you Savannah. So Paige ends up.
Okay, so he's rough.
Okay, no, keep talking.
No, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say he's relatively young. That's all, that's all for wrestlers.
Alright. End of the match.
Blah, 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 blah.
Hangman ends up hitting two buckshot lariats, I'm ignoring you, ends up hitting two buckshot lariats because Wardlow does not go down after the first one. And Paige advances to the finals of the number one contender championship tournament at full gear. Nobody is surprised.
Yeah.
I liked, it was at the end, it was pretty dope. I mean, the buckshot layers, I mean, they were sloppy as shit, but I mean, they had just been kicking the fuck out of each other, but yeah, I liked, I liked that it, it took more than just one cuz first of all, terrible fucking finisher to begin with. I mean, it looks dope, but I mean, like it's still just at the end of the day, a fucking clothesline.
I mean, Brody Lee's is just the same kinda thing.
Exactly. I didn't say that one was good either.
Okay, okay. I'm just making sure.
No, I mean, I thought it made sense that like he had to hit it twice on somebody like Wardlow, don't get me wrong, like.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, that's what I'm saying, like cuz at the end of the day, it is still a clothesline, just cuz you flip and really to me, the flipping takes out of how much power he can fucking use, cuz every time he flips, he's gotta like readjust to fucking do it, so it's like.
More flips equals more, uh, power though in.
No, that's not, it's supposed to be in, in real life though, you could tell, it, it takes away from the fucking.
Oh no, absolutely, I hear you. I'm just being a contrarian dick, so that's all.
Are you? Wow, never would have expected that.
I no sell his shit like Brock Lesnar, I don't care what he says.
We had another Mox promo, um, basically saying how, like a bunch of the stuff he said, uh, in the past few weeks, before full gear, it's been all business, now it's personal. He's going to weaponize the title. Oh, what, go ahead.
Back to shitty mocks, like after he did, did that bomb ass fucking promo last week.
Yeah.
Goes back to the, to the mocks that I fucking hate, like just recycled bullshit that doesn't mean anything. You already said everything you said last week, you just said it again in a worse fucking way. It was like, what was the point of even saying it? Like you said all this, the literally exact same shit last week and it was fucking fire. Even my hatin' ass said it was fire and agreed with it. And then you come back with this shit, like.
Nah, these box promos are getting a little generic for me.
Thank you, even if fucking positive puss motherfucking Kevin is saying it. It's got us, like, bro, come on.
No, I mean, it's, cuz you're right, it's, it's almost like he's falling into like that babyface trap where it's like, oh, I'm, I'm a respectful fighter guy and I respect the fight and I'm gonna respect everything and I'm gonna fight and respect and fight, respect. And it's like, dude, you, you can only say that so many times, you know, before I'm like, I get it, bruh, like move on.
What I keep saying about people saying that Moxley is different than Dean Ambrose, he's not. It's the exact same fucking character. I've not seen anything crazy or anything, any mocks from like CZW or anything like that. That mocks is different than Dean Ambrose. This mocks is not. This is just Dean Ambrose in another fucking promotion, flat out. And you can, any, all the AW fans can argue with me and fucking say whatever they want, but I can literally probably, if you gave me enough time, I bet you I could find ten fucking WWE Gene, Gene Ambrose promos, ten John Moxley AW promos, line them up next to each other and you couldn't tell the fucking difference except for the logo on the corner.
I mean, maybe you're right. I don't, the thing is, is that like I genuinely liked Mox when he first came, you know, into AW and all that shit. I'm just kinda over it, man. It's like, you know?
It's the same, it's literally the same. It's Gene Ambrose. He is.
Yeah, I, I mean, well, it's not even that for me. It's like I said, it's like just falling into like that cheesy babyface trap where I'm just like, okay, man, you're just gonna give me the same promo over and over and over and over again and it's like, dude, okay.
Was like, he keeps saying that he came there to be different and to do different things, like I'm waiting on that cuz I still haven't seen it yet a year in. And my thing is like, he has a whole ass fucking thing of John Moxley and CZW beating the shit out of people, death matches and all that shit, where he really was crazy and you really thought he was a lunatic. Why can't they do any of that shit here? Like you're supposed, you're supposed to have the freedom, he's supposed to be able to do whatever the fuck he wants. Let's see some light bulbs. Those, uh, fluorescent bulbs smashed on somebody's fucking head. Let's, let's see some blood, something like, I, I wanna see crazy John Moxley.
Well, they did, they did. The one, the, the match that he had with Omega or whatever and.
Went to the table and all that shit, I mean.
Like, didn't they get like legitimately get in trouble for that? Like one of the, the sports commission was like, bro, you gotta tone that down for some reason. I, I don't remember for sure, so.
I think you're right. I, I don't know if that was kayfabe or if that was just some shit on, on the, you know what I'm saying, or real life.
Yeah, yeah.
No, but like, even, I even liked that though, like when he fucking, uh, paradigm shift him through that glass table backstage and shit like.
Oh my God.
I'm alright with that. I can get down with that, but other than that, what crazy has he done?
Alright, no more Mox talk, we're done. I let this go on too long.
I kinda like him.
I still like him, I'm just over it. I, I need a Mox timeout, I think, is what I'm saying.
You both need a timeout.
Katie, I swear to God.
Kevin, I swear to God.
Which God? Probably not the same God.
Anyways, Eddie Kingston is taking on Matt Seidel.
I miss most of.
What?
I miss most of this match.
I thought you said I miss Moxley. I was like, Jesus Christ.
No. Kevin, did you see this match?
Uh, part of it, but not the whole thing.
Okay, so you both basically missed it, okay. Um, so basically Kingston gives a promo in the beginning, basically saying he's tired of talking, which that's saying something because Kingston's one of the best talkers in the business today.
Yeah.
And then he just keeps bringing up how Mox, I hope you're watching from home, how the champ's not here. Again, the same, the same shit like they all keep saying.
Right.
Yep.
Um, but the match itself, it's again, like the traditional like edgy brawler brunt of Kingston and the high flyer, Matt Seidel. The match is good. I mean, it wasn't like, a lot of it was in picture and picture and there was a commercial, so. Um, Kingston ends up getting the, uh, bulldog choke on Seidel for the win and he doesn't let go and then, uh, Bunny, Blade, and Butcher come in and he's just saying, say I quit Moxley, say I quit. And Matt Seidel, who's trying to breathe, is just like, I quit. And then that was it.
I, I mean, the match felt like me more of a vehicle to, you know, obviously promote the Kingston Moxley match and like, any, like with, with what Kingston and Moxley are doing with this, and this isn't even necessarily a, a knock on either one of them, it's just like, it's like you don't even need to do any of this anymore. You know, it's like.
They're blowing time though, cuz that was their fault for starting so far out for this fucking feud, knowing you only do pay-per-views every few months.
Yeah, no, that's true, cuz I mean, I, I, I think this match is gonna be absolutely fired, like they're gonna.
They're gonna kill each other.
But like, but like, I, I'm just like, I, I don't even want them talking shit to each other anymore. I just want them to like be away from each other until the match, you know what I mean?
Only thing I got from this match was this is who they wasted the last, uh, spot in the Casino Royale, whatever, Battle Royale.
Basically.
This is the dude they wasted that fucking spot on.
Made his debut too as the.
Should've been Nero. And this, this is who we got.
It's getting squashed already.
Squashed a month later, a couple months later. First time back on TV, squashed.
Yep.
Way to go. Great booking.
So we go from that match to the FTR Young Bucks interview, which you both said you missed a little bit of, right?
I missed pretty much all of it, the last part, I think.
Yeah, I missed most of it too, honestly.
Okay, so, um, Excalibur's like with the Bucks and FTR's in another location with, uh, Tully. Um, basically just asking Matt how his ankle is. He said, um, it's sprained, but they're gonna have this match regardless, like he wants this. He was like, Nick, if you have to carry me to the ring, I'll hop on one leg, I don't even care. And then this is like a dream match, like people have been talking about this for a long time. So Excalibur asks, uh, FTR why they would, excuse me, jeopardize this match. And they're basically just saying, oh, it's like, we don't care about the dream match, like the, this is like pointless. They, they're gonna do whatever they want. Typical FTR heel bullshit.
Right.
And then, uh, Excalibur asks Matt, like, what's going on with like the changes recently with you guys? Basically, they're going back to like the old Bucks. Uh, he says sometimes good people do bad things. And FDR gets so upset that Excalibur's mainly talking to the Bucks that they leave the interview. They're like, you don't even, you don't need us for this interview and they literally walk off. So then Excalibur is talking to the Bucks again and Nick says they have more to lose because Matt decides that if they don't win the titles, they will never challenge for the titles again.
I'm so, why do they keep doing this dumbass?
But here's the thing, they're not, the Bucks are gonna win though. They're not, they're not gonna have Kenny be the only one of the EVPs to be able to go after a title.
We thought that was gonna happen with, uh, Cody too and look where we're at.
But they created the TNT title right after that though.
I know, but I mean, I, I, why would you go, like, it's a stupid thing to say.
It's the dumbest shit ever. Like, so why, I mean, can't challenge, if they can't challenge for the tag titles, there's literally no reason for the Young Bucks to be on TV anymore. Bye.
I mean, no, it's just like, I get it, like you're like, yo, if I'm not good enough to beat the best, I don't deserve it or whatever, but it's like, dude, don't, don't say those things. Like, why are you hamstringing yourself to be like, I'm never, like if I get one goddamn title opportunity, I'll never take another one again if I lose this.
Like WWE does, they do it for whoever the current champion is, like as long as so-and-so still has the belt, you can't challenge for. Not for the fucking rest of the time we're accompanied, like just. These are the things, these are the things I say about AEW all the time and people, I look at me like I'm bugging, like they make asinine fucking decisions to try and be different and it makes no sense, like you, why would you? To me, the Bucks are the best team on this fucking roster. I don't care, I don't like FTR like everyone else does. They're alright, but they're boring as shit in the ring, their promos are dope cuz they're heels, but their, their in-ring style and everything does not, I never really liked it like that. The Bucks are the best tag team by far. Bucks are lucha bros. They should have the belts. I'd watch them fight every fucking pay-per-view. That, I mean, that's just the brass tacks, I mean, like why, I, I don't, I don't, their, their business model is shit.
Well, I, I just, yeah, I mean, like look at how it worked out for Cody. It just didn't work out. It's like, I mean, I understand that, you know, they created the TNT belt, like, you know, um, Katie was saying, um, but like.
Kenny Omega got, was a tag team champion. At, at the Bucks even ever even won the tag titles?
Not in AW, no.
That's what I'm saying, Kenny Omega had the, had, had a tag team title run before the fucking Young Bucks. Arguably the best team in, arguably the best tag team in our era and the best team in the, on this fucking roster. And Kenny Omega, a singles guy, was the tag team champion before that.
Listen, I'm not, I'm not saying you're wrong. I agree, the stipulation is stupid. It's, it's, it, it doesn't make sense. I mean, I saw a lot of people on Twitter, they were like, when, well Cody was baby faced when he said it. So then they gave him this, but if, since the Bucks are heels, which they are, but they aren't, then they can just go back on their word. Because like, I mean, that was like the biggest thing about Cody taking on Jericho was that like, he's not gonna challenge anymore. They just dropped. Was that like, he's not gonna challenge anymore. They just dropped this a week before full gear.
All that shit on Twitter is just A W stands, standing for A W. Every time I see those type of comments, tears don't come, I wonder why.
I'm just, I'm just saying what I have been seeing. I don't think they're gonna take this as seriously as they did with the Cody situation.
Maybe not.
If anything, like, go ahead.
But are the Bucks heel, though? I mean, like, they're.
They're, they're heel, they're heel, they're like tweeners right now.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I mean. So like.
But I mean, that's, that's also something you should think about. The Bucks have always been like heelish, but they've always been applauded. They've always.
Well, yeah, yeah. I mean, cause their, their popularity transcends.
Heels, not heelish. They didn't, they didn't, this in-between bullshit is just A W. It, uh, New Japan, they were heels, beating the shit out of people, telling people to suck their cocks. Tearing shit up backstage. They were heels and people applauded them. This is another watered-down version of what they were. Their business model sucks. Put the fucking belts on the Bucks, put the big belt on fucking, uh, Kenny. And ride this shit out. Like, come on, goddamn. They're like a year too late.
I mean, I think that with what, what's going on, I mean, they're gonna put the belt on Kenny. I, I see that happening with, you know, the way things have been going lately.
Like I said, day late, dollar short.
Well, fair enough, but you know.
I guess, I, I guess we'll just have to see next week.
Right.
Cause next week, we have a dynamite and then we have full gear on Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
Saturday, yeah, Saturday 7th, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, a week from Halloween, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
So we will find out then, if the stipulation ends up being true or not. Now, moving on to the town hall meeting, uh, basically saying, should M J F join the inner circle? You both missed the majority, right?
I mean, we, I missed the second half of it. I'm, the first half, I seen all this with the pie charts and the people asking questions and shit.
Yeah, I saw, I saw most of that myself. I missed most of the second half of it too.
Okay, so basically it's just like, like people asking questions. So Lutesaurus, how can you financially help the inner circle? And Max pulls up a nice pie chart or graphic, graph chart, Jesus. Whatever. I don't do math.
You're underselling Lutesaurus coming in like on a Will Ferrell old school where he blacks out at the. Lutesaurus came in hot. That was fire. That's probably the best.
Yeah, yeah.
I freaking love Lutesaurus.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. He's hilarious. Um, I like that he doesn't do very much mic work. And then when he does, it's so fucking good. It's just so, yeah.
He's the only dinosaur with a master's degree, Kevin. Of course, he's gonna be good on the mic.
Bruh. I, I'm not, I'm not gonna argue with that. He's had sixty-five million years to hone his skills.
He has, he, he has. Uh, so then Bert Baker comes up and asks a question, talking about how, uh, M J F has terrible, like, what are they gonna do with M J F's terrible track record with friendships? And then they're all like, oh, like, what if you turn on us? Well, what if you guys turn on me? Like, it's, like.
Doesn't Reba say something? I, I missed part of it about, uh, somebody having a smile or.
Jericho, yeah.
Oh, Jericho, okay. I wasn't sure who she was hitting on, cause it was like, my shit froze and it was like, he has a great smile. And I was like, holy man, she.
Froze too.
Well, there we go. Uh, yeah, Reba is just like, Jericho has a good smile. And then Bert Baker's like, you're being weird. And pushes her out of the way and then asks her question. And then, poor Peter Avalon asks a question, basically. Can I join the circle?
Funny.
And made all this laugh, which this poor man still is still winless in A W, by the way. Still winless.
By the way, I saw that he, uh, I didn't watch Dark, but I saw that he wrestled Brandon Cutler, who is.
Can't hear you, bro.
Yeah, say it one more time. No, Kev, I think you're muted yourself. Ah, Kevin broke himself. Jesus. Nope.
Moving on.
Moving on. Uh, then Eric Bischoff comes back and asks a three-tiered question, I think is what he said it was. There he is, he's back, okay.
Okay.
Um, he asked M J F.
Going out with this mic. I'll have to fix that later. Sorry.
Uh, he asked M J F, what can you do for the inner circle? And Max simply just says, friendship. One-worded answer, friendship. That's what he, that's what he can do for the inner circle.
Where's the lie, though?
Then Bischoff asks, what do you believe the inner circle can do for you? And he says, well, I might not be the best team player, but I can learn how to be.
That's growth, man. This guy's trying to get some emotional, uh, maturity here and you're just shitting on him. How do you feel about that?
I feel pretty damn good, Kevin, if you must know.
Well, maybe you should smile more about it then.
We're not doing this. And then Bischoff's last question is, what is the guarantee that you both don't turn on each other? Because he basically calls them both prima donnas. And M J F is like, well, I check every single box. Last week, I gave you the best segment of your career. The best segment in wrestling.
Totally.
And then he says, what haven't I done? Jericho's simple response, you haven't beat me.
Finally.
Finally. We've been waiting.
Yeah.
So at full gear, it is going to be M, M J F taking on Chris Jericho. And if M J F wins, he can join the inner circle.
He's joining the inner circle.
And then, uh, he says, I'll do whatever it takes to win. And then Ortiz grabs the mic and is like, listen, me and Sammy hate you. We don't want you in the inner circle. And he challenges M J F and Wardlow to a tag match next week with him and Sammy. And he says, you're not making it to the pay-per-view. And then they all walk away.
I mean, I love the inner circle, but those are some big words. Those are some big words, bro.
I mean, okay, my computer, my other computer died. That's awkward.
Uh-oh.
The screen just shut off. I was about to switch to my phone. I need the chat up. There we go. Um, I mean, I like the fact that, uh, Sammy and Ortiz are the ones who hate M J F.
Yeah.
Like, I like that. They, San, uh, they said Santana was on the fence. And Jake Hager's off getting ready for some like MMA fight or something, which is why he wasn't there. Which he wasn't missed by me, so I don't really care.
Yeah. I'm a big Hager fan myself.
Is anybody really a Hager fan?
I am, but it fucking wrestle enough for me in A W.
Okay.
I don't know. Who was his last? Like, six months ago?
Something like that. I mean, I, I guess, I don't know, whatever, Jake Hager.
Whatever, Jake Hager. Um, oh, so now, did you guys see the, uh, lumberjack match?
For the most part.
Most of it, yeah.
Okay. Damn. Y'all got, y'all got screwed.
Screwed.
I'm so sorry.
Well, what I wanted to say about the M G, well, go ahead, man, sorry.
No, I was saying, we weren't joking when we said we missed about thirty minutes of the show.
Yeah, I missed a lot of it. It sucked.
Yeah.
Um, but what I want out of this M J F stuff is like a power struggle within, uh, inner circle, you know? Um, so like he joins and then, you know, um, power struggle between him and Jericho. Yeah. Like, that would be dope. So that's, I mean, that's.
Well, we were talking about that. I just don't, I don't know if they'll do it because they did it with the Elite coming into.
That's true. That's true. I didn't think about that.
Sorry, Matt in the chat said Hager is the inner circle of China and.
That's true.
I mean, he's not wrong.
I just, I just happened to glance and that's the first thing I saw. So I love that. Uh, moving on to the T N T title lumberjack match. So it's Cody taking on Orange Cassidy. Part two. Um, immediately, uh, Orange goes for the orange punch. Cody goes for the crossroads. And this match, I definitely think was better than the first one. Personal opinion, I don't know.
I, I couldn't, I'm, I didn't watch it. I didn't see enough of it to even.
That's fair.
Like I did, I did see that part, like how it started out. I thought that was dope. And then I saw like, maybe a couple sequences in the middle and I didn't, I didn't even see the finish.
Damn.
I saw the finish. That was, the finish was dope. I mean, I don't know dope, but it made sense, you know?
Yeah, like I said, I can't even, I can't give you anything real on this, cause I missed most of this match.
But the best friend spot was, was really funny. I like that a lot.
So at one point, uh, Cassidy's on the apron and best friends and like the face, uh, lumberjacks are like right there. And Cody like hits Orange's hand and he falls back into the arms of best friends and they kind of just push him back up. And then, not even ten seconds later, Cody's in the exact same spot, falls into the arms of best friends. And then they just drop him on the ground. And then Cody gets up, pushes Trent and then goes back in the ring. Uh, the ref's like checking on Orange Cassidy or something and Trent just clocks Cody. Which, I mean, you pushed him, he's gonna hit you back. Like, that's, that's fair.
Cody's super heel in this one, like he was there last match.
Cody?
Yeah.
I wouldn't say that he was.
Not him. I'm not asking you walk the line. I'm talking to Katie.
Walk the line, what?
I mean, he definitely was more heel last time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, like he definitely.
That's what I was, yeah.
Finally fucking coming.
It's, it's, it's definitely gonna happen at full gear. Like, it's gonna, it has to. I just sense it, especially against Derby. Uh, it'd be perfect.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I think they like come back from commercial or something and the, all the lumberjacks are basically fighting each other. Cody hits a superplex off the top and they go into the pile of lumberjacks. And as they get back in the ring, like Cassidy has a nice sequence of moves going on. Um, one member of the Dark Order, I don't, I legit don't know who it was, slides in, distracts the ref. John Silver comes in, punt kicks, uh, Cassidy in the face. Apparently Cody didn't see it, is what they were saying. But Orange falls down into the ropes and Arn Anderson clocks Orange Cassidy.
Right? That's crazy.
Apparently Cody didn't see that either. And then, I'm pretty sure he hits the crossroads for the wins. Dude. I don't know.
No, that was. Yeah. It was, uh, it was crazy. Um, I, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, and then after Cody wins, all hell breaks loose. Like, all the lumberjacks come in, start whooping each other's ass. And the gun club, so Billy Gunn and his son Austin, are disshoring like one member of the Dark Order. And Cody and Arn are like watching from the tunnel. They're just like, interesting.
Yeah.
And that leads to something for next week, which I'll get there when I talk about what's happening next week. So I mean, it wasn't a bad match. I definitely liked the sequence of events more. But like, Arn punching Cassidy doesn't necessarily make sense.
There we go again, A W.
I mean, it doesn't not make sense, but I hear, they could've done it differently. Ah, they could've done things differently. I hear you. Um, I, I don't know. Uh, it's like, cause they, the match was so dope, man. Like, I, him and Ca, uh, Cody and Cassidy have put on, like, the last couple times they've been in the ring, well, they've only had the one match, haven't they? The one, the one, a couple weeks ago. Both of their matches have been really, really awesome and really fun, you know? Uh, give them a third match, I guess. A definitive, like, winner? I don't know, man. Cause like, uh, you know, obviously the one went to twenty minutes and then Cody needed help to beat him, you know, so.
This is the second time John Silver's gotten involved in Orange Cassidy's matches, especially against Cody. And so, uh, they announced later in the night that on the buy-in, it's going to be Orange Cassidy taking on John Silver, which I'm actually really excited for that match.
Yeah, I'm, I'm way more excited for that match than I thought I'd be when they, when they announced it.
Anti-Orange Cassidy.
What?
What's that?
Anti-Orange Cassidy's fucking on level ninety-five.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I think that's why I'm so excited for it. Cause they're polar opposites. Oh, fuck, it's gonna be so great. I can't wait. Um, moving on, we have one of the dumbest segments. Like, it was, I, I almost didn't even write it down, cause I didn't even wanna talk about it. But basically, best friends are walking backstage, they're about to have an interview. Uh, Kip and Miro offer them a present. Um, handed to them by Penelope Ford, who's actually dressed up as Orange Cassidy. And the, I, I don't remember which one. They're like trick or treat and Trent says neither. And then they start brawling. And then.
Yeah.
Miro's just like, I'll never forgive you for breaking the arcade machine.
He's silly. It's dumb, but whatever. It keeps the feud going, I guess.
But like.
I mean, that's literally all.
Nobody wants this feud. We want Miro to be a singles guy.
Of course.
Let him recall. Like, no, no, we don't.
Sit back here, sip my tea, cause I've been saying all these inconsistencies and ridiculous bullshit in these storylines. That A W keeps throwing at us and everyone just accepts it. Oh, it's A W, they're the best thing on TV.
Well, they are, so shut up. No, I'm just kidding.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying I liked the segment in any way, in form. I love best friends.
No, I know what you're saying.
But like, this.
It's ass. It was filler bullshit. It really was.
Tell them, Kev, tell them, Kev. Say it. Say what it is.
No, it's, I just said, it's, it's filler bullshit, but that doesn't mean that I can't have fun with it.
I'm not talking to you. I'm talking to her. Say it. Say it.
No.
Don't do anything you don't want to, Katie.
My show.
Say it one time. I just wanna hear that dirty little mouth of yours. Just say it. Say it's ass. Say it's ass.
No.
Alright, we know you're thinking it, cause I am.
Anyways, we get a title match next. Uh, the newly crowned N W A women's champ Serena Deeb, she won it off Thunder Rosa last night, literally last night.
Yeah.
Taking on, uh, newcomer Leela Hirsch. I don't know if I'm pronouncing her last name right. She's literally like Zelena Vega-sized. She's tiny.
Which one?
Leela. Like, she's smaller than, uh, Serena.
Shorter than Serena?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, she's thicker for sure, man, like.
She was like a miniature version of Piper Nivens, like she.
That's what I was thinking too, is more along those lines.
Oh, I didn't even think about that.
Yeah.
Damn. That's, that's definitely what I should've said.
Cause I was like, Zelena Vega, no way, she's.
Little Zelena Vega or?
When I say, when I say little, I meant height-wise.
Yeah, she was tiny as shit. Like Danny DeVito, never turns or something.
But she was, she was, like, this was like a very, like, surprisingly good match. Like, I didn't.
Matches I've seen in full.
I mean, I loved it. Like, they definitely showed that Serena, like, they showed that Deeb was literally still hurting from last night's match. Leela taking advantage of it. She's very impressive. I guess she had a match on Dark last night. Was like her debut.
Oh, okay.
Um, I, I think, I think I, the name sounded familiar and I think that's where it was from. Um, she focuses on the arm of Deeb. But, I mean. Um, she focuses on the arm of Deeb, but I mean, Serena Deeb being Serena Deeb, I love her. She does this amazing submission. She like grabs her arm, pulls back her leg, makes her tap. I was about it.
Yeah, that was, that was a sick ending.
She's literally, duh, like I, like I said, this is the only match I got to see in full, but this was like, I thought this was gonna be a fucking squash match. I didn't think.
So did I.
A real match. It was, it was nice, especially for AW's women division. Like, this was a good fucking, this was a good little starting point for them to maybe keep forward and having banker women's matches and not just, Britt Baker kicking somebody's teeth out and shit for.
Yeah. No, 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 this, yeah, this match was super legit. And uh the uh Lillian Hirsch? Like she, yeah, Lila, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Lila. Uh, no, she was su- well, I, let's hope she is. Wouldn't that be badass? No, she was really, really impressive. Uh, you know, I mean, Serena Deeb's obviously, you know, um, the uh Thunder Rosa to win that belt, you know what I'm saying? And I mean, Thunder Rosa's arguably one of the best women in wrestling right now, you know? So like, that's, that's not a, not a, a small feat and, she looked like she belonged in the ring with her, you know? It was, it was good.
I, I was definitely impressed for sure.
Yeah.
I get, I mean, I'm excited to see, like, I'm more so excited to see the relationship between NWA and AW and where it goes from here.
Yeah. For real. That's really, that, that's really cool cuz that's what I was thinking too, because uh this helps AW elevate their women's division, immediately, you know? And it helps NWA get that much more exposure. It's just a really, it's.
I don't understand why this isn't a thing from the beginning, like especially being who the Bucks and Kenny and all them are, like they have relationships, but all these federations outside of WWE, like, that was, I think, that was supposed to be the whole reason why they were executive vice president to, kind of broker those relationships and bring more people on, like, I, they should have New Japan there, Ring of Honor, any fucking, that wants to partner up with them, especially like you said, they're women, like even if you don't do anything else, at least take those, those promotions, top two or three women and bring them over.
Yeah.
Or division. And if you don't do anything else, at least do that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, you know, not to make excuses, but maybe COVID had something to do with some of those plans too, because.
Yeah, well, it was like Billy Corgan said that, that they had things lined up or whatever, but COVID.
Oh, okay, okay.
Whatever.
Cuz I was gonna say, how, like, that Ricky Starks, he came from NWA, right? That's where he was. Okay, okay.
So I mean, I, I will just have to see like where it goes and if we'll keep getting like women's title matches every week cuz I'm down.
If they're gonna be like that.
Absolutely.
Uh, speaking of women's champions, Sheeta, uh, she's backstage doing an interview, uh, and they're just like, so Nyla Rose has been the number one contender for a while. Uh, and like she wants to face you, whatever. Just Sheeta takes Mike and she's like, Nyla, you want me? I want you at full gear. Boom, no build, whatever. We get Nyla and Sheeta, part two at full gear. I'm annoyed. Listen. There's been no build. They don't even have Sheeta on TV rarely ever. It's, it's not, it's not right, like whatever.
It was on, she was on Dark yesterday.
She was, she, she had a match on Dark.
On Dark. Yeah. I mean, come on. That's. And you're right, like, I mean, I, don't get me wrong, I'm glad. Jesus Christ. You, you're right though, like, I, I mean, I'm glad that they're, they're having, uh, you know, the women's championship, uh, defended, but like, come on, give me, give me something, just something, like, you know, to, to chew on here.
I've said it, I've said it in full, like, their whims vision isn't what it needs to be in any way, shape or form, so.
Nope.
That's, I'm not even having the conversation again. I've had it too many fucking times on this show. I'm not going into detail about it. I'm not in the mood for it.
Give, give me your, give me your thoughts.
Fuck off, Kevin. Those are my thoughts.
I mean, those are pretty regular thoughts around here.
Please stop looking at me like that.
I know, man. He is staring daggers at us right now. Now he's, now he's trying not to smile and shit.
I don't need to participate in this segment. You, I'm pretty sure you guys know what I'm gonna say.
Fair enough.
Shawn Spears taking on VSK, uh, one of the shortest matches. Uh, I literally just let me say it. It's, it was a three-minute segment at least. He hits the C four on this kid. One, two, three. He's being harassed and like candy's being thrown at him from the crowd. It's someone in a bull costume. Oh my God, it's Scorpio Sky because they have a feud now. And then he hits the TKO on Spears and now they have a match for next week. Ta-da, there you go.
The only thing I will say about this ass, astastic voyage that we're on. They have a feud because he told Scorpio Sky, good luck, like three weeks ago.
Apparently.
Yeah.
Um, Shawn Spear, or Scorpio is a thief. He somehow took Shawn Spears' moment. I, I don't know what moment they are talking about.
No one does.
That's, that's. Like, that's, that's the theme they're going with. I don't know, I mean.
What is this weird power or, I don't know, uh, spirit avenges maybe that this fucking glove gives him, like? Like, what is, like?
I can't.
That's just straight stupid. I don't know what the fuck that's all about. I'm not into it at all.
The glove was like worn by like another wrestler, like a long, long. I.
Yeah. So like.
I just, I don't, I don't know. I don't know. Anyways. I don't know.
Supposed to make wrestler?
Dude, I don't know.
Apparently.
Is it supposed to make this make sense?
So next week. Jericho's on commentary. We get Miro versus Trent. Ortiz and Sammy taking on MJF and Wardlow. Uh, Shawn Spears taking on Scorpio Sky. Uh, Cody and the Gun Club taking on Dark Orders, Cole Cabana, John Silver and Number Ten. And then we uh finally get Mox and Kingston face to face before full gear next Saturday.
I mean, alright, cool.
Going home show, you know, whatever.
I mean, they did a lot of the go-home stuff this week, so.
Yeah, basically.
So this is basically just gonna be like a lot of filler stuff next week, which I, I don't mind, like, full gear's locked and loaded, like.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna be good.
And I never first, I never subscribed to that notion that every, the go-home shows are supposed to be fucking like, over the top crazy, like, no, they're going at the pay-per-view is supposed to be the over the top.
Exactly.
I, I was like, oh, it's a go-home show, this sucks. I'm like, why would they blow their fucking load on the go, the show before the fucking? When everything's supposed to happen, like, I never, like, that was one of the wrestling fans bitch about that I'd never like, understood, like, no, the go-home show, it should end, it should end with whoever the world champion feud is. It should end with that person either standing over top or something with them and go the fuck on about your business, like, I don't, I never understood like why people wanted like a barbed wire match on the go-home show.
Right. No, the go-home show, all it should do is get you hyped for the pay-per-view in a few days.
Right.
That's, you know, it shouldn't, like, I'm not saying that, and that doesn't even mean that it has to be like bad, in that sense, but it doesn't have to be exciting in order for a home sho- uh going home show to be good, you know? So, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it ends with, the hottest feud in AW, which is at currently at the moment, Mox and Kingston, and it's like with the title, then that's all you need.
Right. Yeah.
Um, so the final match of the night, the second semifinals match in the tournament. Kenny Omega taking on Penta Els, uh, Zero Mio, because they gotta add more on to this poor man's name.
Right.
He used to just be.
Why?
Junior, but then he was Penta, then he was Penta L zero, now he's Penta L zero, you know, because, settle me though, cuz God forbid.
That fuck, it was, it was fucking Ki- uh Greg Kittle, whatever, Sam Kiddles from the ESPN thing. They did a fucking special on his Sunday.
Oh, did they really?
I did.
Uh, yeah, well, last year in the playoffs and he scored a touchdown and he did the Zero Majoro shit.
Anytime he first down, he did it. So ESPN did a fucking special on it and they had Penta on it and everything.
No, no shit. That's cool. Yeah, he's a huge wrestling fan, George Kittle.
Literally this aired Sunday and then they added the Zetto Meadow, Seto Meadow, whatever, to his fucking name Wednesday.
Oh, so maybe that's what it had to do with then.
That's exactly what it had to do with.
Well, last week he was just Penta L zero. Now this week he's Penta L zero Miedo.
Yeah, I'm guarantee you that's what it was. That shit aired. I put it in the group chat when I was watching it, uh, Sunday.
Yeah, I remember that now.
Now his name's changed, so. Alright, taking advantage, I guess.
Yeah.
Go Forty Niners.
So besides Penta's ever-changing name, we get a new list of accomplishments for Kenny.
I missed this whole damn thing and that sucks cuz I bet it was hilarious.
He, uh, like Justin Roberts is just reading off another long list of accomplishments. Um, Wrestle Joy, who's like another like big uh website and everything, they got a shout out on Dynamite, so that was kinda cool. Um, and the Broom Girls are both wearing uh Lucha Bros masks, so one's wearing Penta, one's wearing Fenix. I was just like, this is, this is amazing. Um, Kenny's like wrestling in a shirt. He's wearing the triple A belt that he beat Penta for. And then they go into a nice, uh, nice vicious child battle because, two of the best strikers in the business. Loud ass chops. My chest hurts still thinking about them.
And this is where my cable fucked up. I didn't get.
Yeah, that sucks. Yeah. I mean, what I saw, this match was really fucking good, but I missed all of that for sure.
That's awful. I like, yeah, that. This was, this was a fantastic fucking match.
Yeah.
V-triggers out the wall zoo, just so many knee strikes. Penta and Kenny's energy is amazing. This is only like the second time in AEW that they've gone one-on-one, the first time being it all in. This one like blew it out the water. Kenny kicks out.
Last ten minutes was fire. I mean, the last ten minutes was fire.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I mean.
Like I, like mine came back in right before he hit him with the arm snap. After those first couple of V-triggers before that, that's like why when my shit came back in.
Yeah, that's about when it came back in for me too, so.
I mean, uh, Penta ends up hitting a Canadian destroyer off the top rope onto the ramp.
Jesus. Jesus Christ. I, my head hurts from that, like, my whole back went, just from watching it, you know, like, oh my God.
But like, it was, the whole match was just filled with so many good spots like that. Kenny kicking out of the package pile driver. Um, he, him attempting the one winged angel like two or three different times. Penta snapping the arm of Kenny, trying to make it impossible for him to do the one winged angel. But hands up, obviously hitting it for the win and we finally are getting, hangman out of page versus Kenny Omega. At full gear to become the number one contender for the AEW world title.
Cannot wait. Cannot wait for that match. It's gonna be so good.
It's gonna be fun.
Yeah. No, like you were saying, I mean, full gear, the, the card for full gear is stacked. Every match is just so, oh my God, I can't wait. I can't wait.
I mean.
I'm gonna lose my shit.
What?
What's you, what's that?
They can't even better win this match. I'm gonna lose my shit.
I mean, listen, I, I hear you, but like, I'd totally be okay with, with Paige. He's, he's.
Fuck that, fuck all that. Fuck all that noise, bruh. Fuck all that noise. Bucks better fucking win the belts and Kenny better fucking win the number one contender show. I want Kenny versus Mox. So we can V-trigger that boring ass fucking head off and win the belt at Revolution. That's what I wanna see. That's what I hope happens.
God damn. Who's the A, who's the AW mark now?
Listen, all you, all these bums that y'all love so much have had their turn and they've sucked. Put it on the. The best wrestler is Kenny Omega and I don't give a fuck what anybody says. He's the best wrestler in their promotion and the Bucks are the best tag team in their promotion. Put the fucking belts on him and call it a night. Put the kids to bed and pop up a cold one and enjoy the rest of your night. Book it.
Book it.
Alright, there you go.
Alright, well, but. Oh, God, okay. So, thank you guys for watching.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
Like Kevin said, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Absolutely.
Follow the show on Twitter.
Hey, loose, bro.
Smackdrop Pod. I hate you, Kevin. Um, go to youtube.com slash smackdrop podcast for the video form. Um, tomorrow night, Aran and Kevin will be doing NXT Halloween Havoc. I will not be there. I am sorry. I'm so excited to see how the two of you do though.
You know that meme with the dog and he's sitting at the table and everything's on fire?
This probably was gonna be like, probably, yeah.
That's, that's a, that's a fair assessment of tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. I can't wait. Well, you guys. It, it's fine. It's gonna be great. I don't know what you guys are talking about.
We'll make it work.
Yeah, you'll figure it out.
But until next Wednesday, when the three of us will be back together, have a good night, guys.